Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the May 17th, 2016, Pecosin School Board Meeting. Drew, would you kick us off, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our pledge tonight will be led by Ms. Hannah Seeley. Hannah is a junior at Pecosin High School. She's in the Teacher Cadet Program with Ms. Volkmanek's second grade class. She has been involved in JV and varsity cheerleading and young life. Hannah plans to go to Randolph-Macon College and major in Psychology and minor in Education.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hannah. Our inspirational reader tonight is Ms. Janine Bowden. Janine is a senior at Pecosin High School. She played JV and varsity volleyball all four years of high school, JV soccer for three years, and has been the wrestling manager for three years. She is a member of SCA, student to student, and is the senior class vice president. She completed her Teacher Cadet internship with Ms. Richardson's class. Next year, Janine will major in Psychology at Christopher Newport University.
A teacher's poem. Every day you greet your students with a smile upon your face. Their paperwork the night before seemed like a grueling race. Money's not your motivation, it's the love for what you do. You hear that special calling in which you always will stay true. Your students are your dedication, devotion is to them, to you each child unique and special, a beautiful little gem. Some days are just demanding and frustration takes its course, then you see those little faces, their inspiration is your force. Each day in your classroom reminds you why you're there, making differences in children's lives with whom your heart you share. There's a special pride in teachers and love for what you do and appreciations always shared between those little lives and you.
Thank you, Rachel. And Janine, Dr. Parrish, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not.
Great. And we're gonna move on to recognitions, and it's my... Sorry. I am so sorry, I am jumping ahead the most important part. Tonight, we have students from Pecosin High School who will share with us their Teacher Cadet experience. And students, we would ask you, after your presentation, to stick with us. We're gonna have a few recognitions, and then we'd like to come out and take a break and visit with you for a few minutes.
Hannah.
The Teacher Cadets and Ms. Bowden appreciate this opportunity to highlight the Teacher Cadet curriculum and internship experience. The Teacher Cadet curriculum includes four sections: experiencing learning, the profession, the classroom, and education itself. Throughout the year, we learn many aspects of teaching, including awareness and reflection, learning styles, student needs, student growth and development, the history and trends of education, certification, and employment to observation and preparation, and finally, application and instruction, only to name a few. Pecosin principals from all four schools allow us to visit and observe their schools and teachers. These visits gave us a better understanding of topics studied in our curriculum. We observed amazing teaching strategies and classroom management techniques, which helped us as we began our internships. During second semester, we worked directly with a teacher. Mrs. Winchester from Pecosin High School was my teacher mentor. She allowed me to jump right in with lessons and games for her 10th grade World Studies II class. The students responded well, and I was able to help her classroom in many ways. Although the internship portion is over, Ms. Winchester is out on maternity leave. I will continue to work with her long-term substitute until their SOL test next Friday. This opportunity has provided me with valuable experience that will help me prepare for my future in education. I plan to attend Christopher Newport University in the fall to major in History and participate in their five-year master's program, offered to obtain my master's in teaching with the hopes of becoming a history teacher at the high school level. And at this time, Janine Bowden will speak about her experiences in the Teacher Cadet Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. My experience involved working with the Pecosin Primary School and its Teacher of the Year, Naina Richardson. Naina is an incredibly talented kindergarten teacher. Ms. Richardson was my volleyball coach before I had the pleasure of being her special friend and Teacher Cadet. I really admire the way she works with her students and have learned a lot from her. During my internship, I observed her creativity, learning, lesson planning, classroom management skills, and teaching techniques. These observations helped me understand the classroom dynamics and Ms. Richardson's expectations. When I began interacting with the students, it was even more rewarding than I expected. Applying what I had learned in Teacher Cadet class to the internship has helped me decide on my career. In conclusion, nine out of nine Teacher Cadets took the Para Pro test and all passed. These cadets can apply for positions as Para Pro after graduation. We would like to thank Pecosin City Public Schools, the principals, the teachers, and staffers supporting us throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel and Janine. And previous to that, I should have thanked Hannah and Janine. This print, for some reason, keeps getting smaller and smaller, and I don't think it's me. Okay. And I've already asked, we do not have any additions or modifications. Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Delegate Gordon Helsel. Delegate Helsel is our delegate from the 91st District. He's no stranger to us in Pecosin. For many years, he was our Honorable Mayor. And I can tell you, I've witnessed firsthand that Delegate Helsel represents us very well and is a huge advocate for Pecosin schools and for education in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. Delegate Helsel, would you come forward, please?
Ms. Chairman, thank you so much for those kind words. I really appreciate that. It is a real pleasure, number one, to be home, and number two, to be able to present a resolution to the Region Two Teacher of the Year. And her name is Lauren Osborne. Is she with us, I'm hoping, if she could join me here? Ms. Chairman, if you would indulge me, just a couple of minutes, I'd like to read the resolution. I think it speaks more eloquently about you than I could, Lauren, so thank you for that. Commonwealth of the Virginia General Assembly, House Resolution Number 114, commending Lauren Osborne. Agreed to by the House of Delegates, February the 5th, 2016. Whereas Lauren Osborne, an English teacher at Pecosin High School, has been selected as the 2016 Virginia Two Teacher of the Year. And whereas the Teacher of the Year Program is sponsored by the Virginia Department of Education and honors teachers who represent the best in teaching in the Commonwealth and the nation. Region Two consists of sixteen school divisions representing 373 schools. And whereas since becoming a teacher, Lauren Osborne has stayed close to her roots. A native of York County, graduated from Grafton High School, and earned her bachelor's and master's degrees from James Madison University. And whereas for the last seven years, Lauren Osborne has taught 11th grade English and advanced placement courses at Pecosin High School. In 2012, she achieved a National Teaching Certification in English Language and Arts for Adolescence, Young Adulthood. And whereas in the classroom, Lauren Osborne consistently sets high standards for herself and her students. Her goals are to establish a safe, consistent... For herself, her goals are to establish a safe, consistent, and engaging environment to support her students however she can. And whereas Lauren Osborne also works to challenge the young men and women she teaches by establishing rigorous expectations for their written work and their analytical skills within their ability levels. And whereas Lauren Osborne is Chair of the English Department at Pecosin High School and is the Pecosin City Public Schools representative to the Southeastern Virginia National Board Certified Teachers Region Network. And whereas other groups that have benefited from Lauren Osborne's contribution are Pecosin High School's athletic programs and marching band. She is co-coach of the girls varsity tennis team and works with the drum majors in the Islander Marching Band. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Lauren Osborne, an 11th grade English and advanced placement teacher at Pecosin High School, hereby be commended for being named the 2016 Virginia Region Two Teacher of the Year. And be it further resolved that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Lauren Osborne. As an expression of the House of Delegates, congratulations and administration for her dedication and work on behalf of her students and for being one of the Commonwealth's outstanding educators and role models. Lauren, it is a true pleasure and honor to be able to present you with this resolution. And on behalf of myself and the 99 other members of the House of Delegates, we say congratulations. And I know the locality is proud of you, the school board is proud of you, the city is proud of you, and your state is proud of you. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to Lauren. She certainly represented us well across the state this past year. Next, we'd like to move on to some other additional recognition, so I'd like to ask at this time if Teresa Gillum could come forward, please. And I'd like to recognize with her in the audience, I believe we have her husband Jennings Gillum and her sons Austin and Matthew. We're recognizing her today for being the Pecosin High School Volunteer of the Month. Teresa has been involved in the PCPS, PTA, or PTO since 2003, when her son Matthew was in Pecosin Primary School. At that time, she volunteered with a program called X-10 where she assisted X-10 teachers by working with children in small groups. Since then, she has volunteered in a variety of positions on the board, including two years on the PES PTO Board, PHS PTA Volunteer Coordinator, Publicity, After Prom Game Room, and After Prom Game Room Chairman. She has also worked as a substitute teacher for our school division. Teresa has been on the After Prom Committee for ten years and chairman for the past three years. This is where her passion lies, because statistically, it saves lives on the most dangerous night of a teen's life. This is the 25th year for the PHS After Prom Committee to host the event, which keeps 350 students entertained from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. For the past 24 years, no PHS student has been involved in alcohol or drug-related traffic accident on the night of prom. It is a huge endeavor for her, from coordinating the eight subcommittees to raising the $18,000 required to hold after prom. Half of the money comes from sponsors and half from fundraising, which is her focus for ten months out of the year. In addition to her after-prom task, she is a wife and mother while working in a home staging business. Mrs. Gilliam's leadership and work ethic will be missed as Matthew graduates. She has been a pleasure to work with, and her shoes will be difficult to fill. Please join me in congratulating Teresa Gillum for being the Volunteer of the Month. And we truly could not do what we do for our students without volunteers like you, so thank you so much. And you probably could come back and work on After Prom some more, if you would like. Next, I'd like to recognize our April Senior of the Month, because she was unable to attend our last meeting, so if Kaitlyn Kason could come forward, please. Kaitlyn excels in the classroom, on the field, and in her community. She is an Honorable Student. She is Vice President of the National Honor Society, a member of Student to Student, Class Secretary of the Student Council Association, her freshman and senior years, and a member of Spanish Honor Society. Kaitlyn has been a member of the field hockey team for five years and has been captain for two of those years. She has also played on the PHS girls soccer team. She helps her community through mission work and vacation Bible school programs at Kirkwood Presbyterian Church. She also assists with field hockey through Pecosin Parks and Recreation to encourage teamwork in Pecosin's youth. In the fall, she will attend Virginia Tech to major in Biochemistry. Please join me again in congratulating Kaitlyn Kason for being Senior of the Month. Our May Senior of the Month at the high school is Grace Catteron. Grace has participated in numerous volunteer activities, such as Key Club, Senior Class Representative, active member of Girl Scouts, a volunteer at Youth Core, and Camp Holiday Trails. She was selected as a sophomore to attend the Baltimore Key Club District Convention. She has personally hosted and organized a cerebral palsy awareness day walk. Grace is an AP Scholar and an Honorable Student. She received Drama Student of the Year Award, English Student of the Year Award, and is a member of the National Honor Society. She is a member of Student to Student, Model United Nations Club, and became a member of the International Thespian Society, and is an active member of the Drama Club at our high school. She will be attending Brenmore College in the fall and plans to major in English. Please join me in congratulating Grace for being the Senior of the Month. Next, we'd like to recognize the success of our Odyssey of the Mind programs. Three of our schools' Odyssey of the Mind teams did a great job at the state competition. We had five teams compete and came away with two first place and one second place finishes. We're gonna call each of the teams up one by one and recognize the students, but before we do that, I'm gonna ask that Norm Rumchuck come forward. He's the coach of all the teams. And Mr. Rumchuck, we'll just ask that you stay up here while we bring our students forward. Let's start with the elementary school. Would Skylar Weston come forward? Cameron Brewer? Lindsey Brown? Meredith Walters? Jacob Matthews? This is our elementary school team, and they put on a great performance with a cute skit about five minions who stopped an evil guy and a sidekick from taking over the world. Their structure held 1,063 pounds, the second highest in Division One elementary weight for the day. They placed second in the state and will be advancing on to the world finals this month. Please join me again in congratulating our Pecosin Elementary School team. Next, we'd ask that our middle school team come forward. First, Eleanor Patterson. Ashley McKenna. Chase Brewer. Tristan Batty. Yena Donovan. The middle school team put on a musical about Romeo and Juliet and how their parents tried to break them up. Their structure held 1,145 pounds, the highest in the Division Two middle school weight for the day. They placed first in the state and will also be advancing on to the world finals this month. Please join me again in congratulating our middle school OM team. And now for our high school team. Please come forward, Justin Bias. Ingrid Steinhow. Thandra Fan. Kendall Diggs. And she's not here this evening, but Eden Follingham was also a member of this team. The Pecosin High School team entertained the audience with an Odyssey of the Mind-themed skit about the OOTM pin, Medusa who loses her pin back and goes on a quest to find it. Their structure held 1,303 pounds, the overall highest weight for the day. They placed first in the state and will be advancing on to the world finals. Please know that the world finals will be held from May 25th to May 28th at Iowa State. We wish all three teams all the best. And again, please join me in congratulating the Pecosin High School OM team. We now would like to recognize our outgoing student school board representatives, so if Drew would now come around the front of the podium. Drew Barton is a junior at Pecosin High School and has been serving as our student representative to the school board for this school year. He's done an excellent job of bringing forward suggestions to Mr. Ratliff and to me. His perspective on the bully prevention program at Pecosin High School led to changes being made to that educational program. Feedback from students, including Drew, indicated that the changes were well-received. He's been an enthusiastic member of the board. In addition to being the student school board representative, he is a varsity swim and track and field athlete. Drew is a member of the National Honor Society, Model United Nations, Academic Challenge, Student to Student, and German Honor Society. After graduating from Pecosin, he plans on attending the United States Coast Guard Academy and serving the nation proudly as an officer in the U.S. Coast Guard. Drew, we thank you for your work this year on the school board. I look forward to seeing you at the high school next year. Please join me in thanking Drew for his work on the school board.
Now, we're gonna take that short break so we can come and visit with you. Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, we're gonna reconvene. Now, we're gonna move on to presentations and reports. And Mr. Bowen, can you come forward and give us the financial update, please?
Thank you, Chairman Cast, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. I have just a couple of items for the finance report this evening. Let me begin. The first item is addressing Item 6D on the consent agenda this evening. And staff is requesting the board authorization to accept and expend additional state revenues during the General Assembly session. During the General Assembly session, there were two budgets that were under consideration. The FY '17 budget, which we debated in detail, but also changes to the 2016 budget, which is our current fiscal year. As part of that process, the General Assembly updates a lot of the data that builds that budget, particularly the enrollment data and participation in some of the programs, regional and special education programs. And PCPS experienced an increase in participation in the regional programs and special ed programs. And as a result, PCPS is expected to receive an additional $86,712. And staff is requesting that these funds be used for additional special education services, additional textbooks, and additional classroom instructional materials and supplies. In addition, when staff prepared the budget for 2016, and this was done last year, we used an average daily membership of 2,070 students as the basis for that budget. We've reported our final number for the year, and that number is 2,078.32, so 8.32 more students than what we had budgeted for. This will result in additional $27,881 for the school system. Staff is requesting that the additional funding be used for operation and maintenance. This will allow Mr. Pappas and his staff to address some of the maintenance issues at our facilities. The second item I wanted to talk about this evening comes from the Daily Press headline this morning. The article mentioned that actual state revenues are lagging behind budgeted forecasts. This is important to note because the state's portion of the 2% raise scheduled for 2017 is based on these projected revenues. However, no action is required at this time. We just wanted to alert the board and alert the staff to this potential issue. It could be that if actual revenues do fall short of projections, that the state could look to other areas in the budget to cut before they address any cuts to the compensation. So, we'll just sit and wait. Additional information will be coming in early June. May is one of the significant months for state revenue collections. It's also a tax filing period for the state. So, in early June, we'll actually know, have a better picture of the state's revenue outlook at that time. And if it continues to, continues in the wrong direction, then we'll bring some action or recommendation to the board in June. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Mr. Pappas, could you come forward and give the operations update, please?
Good evening, Chairman Cast, school board, Dr. Parrish. Last Saturday, in transportation, we had the much anticipated rodeo in conjunction with York County. It was a very well-attended event, and three of our drivers, out of our cadre of drivers who participated, Robbie Lockhart, who's a substitute driver, first year, took first place among the Pecosin participants. Jack Gloss, who's also a sub-driver, took second place. And Doris Anderson, just a few points behind, came in third place among the Pecosin participants. Robbie Lockhart did extremely well. I believe he's, they haven't given me the final number, but he either came in second or third overall between our contestants and the ones for York County. All told, there were 35 entrants. It's a day that's filled with fun for families and children. In fact, there were an additional 10 Pecosin drivers, family members, and children who came out to support their drivers. So, our drivers are competing, and we had others from our cohort come out and wish them well. Special thanks goes out to Shirley Martin, who spent the entire day judging one of the nine events. It was a lovely day, and we thank her for her efforts. Under food service, there are two items and other matters for consideration. The first is the proposed meal prices for next year. Part of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 requires that all food service authorities, of which we are one, are required to meet certain criteria relative to lunch pricing. USDA gives us a calculation tool called the Price Lunch Equity Tool. This year, as a consequence, we recommend that we hold prices the same for PES and PPS breakfast, increased 10-cent breakfast at PMS and PHS. For lunch, PPS and PES increase 5 cents, and for PMS and PHS, an increase of 10 cents for lunch. Lastly, as it pertains to adult pricing, we're recommending that we move away from fixed price for adult meals in favor of à la carte concept. À la carte, teachers can take what they want. With fixed pricing, teachers are required to take the exact portions and food components associated with the National School Lunch Program. This is somewhat confusing for cashiers. It's restrictive, as they have to take exactly what students take. Changing this benefits both cashiers as well as adults that may elect to eat with us, as they can now mix products without having a discussion of substitutions, which is something that we can't do under the confines of the rulings. This often results in confusion, overcharging, or discussions at the cash registers. With à la carte pricing, adults will often pay less than they currently are, and cashiers will find it easier to charge correctly. The second item and other matters for consideration is that of authorizing the superintendent to enter a contract for food service management services for the next year. PCPS put together a request for proposal. After the statement of work and associated specs and legal language were all vetted by our attorney, as well as the Office of Nutritional Services in Richmond, we put out the RFP. We had considerable interest, up to and including the mandatory pre-bid conference. On the day of submission, Aramark was the single respondent. The committee has reviewed the RFP for fairness and reasonableness. Among the highlights, Aramark will invest $85,000 over the next two years into our program, specifically equipment and marketing to help students and entice them into greater Also of considerable note is that Aramark will guarantee that revenues will exceed expenses by $107,000 next year. As you may recall, previous to this, we've been on a break-even guarantee. This is a significant departure for that. It is recommended, therefore, that PCPS enter into a contract for food services with Aramark for the 2016-17 school year with the option of up to four one-year renewals. If approved by the board, we will still need to finalize our contract, as well as the details of our RFP have to be presented to the Department, Office of Child Nutrition Services, for final review and approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Any questions or comments for Mr. Pappas? Steve, Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
I have one question. Is it written in the contract that they are guaranteeing the $107,000?
In excess revenue over expenses.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Colley, would you come forward with the instructional update, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Cast, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. This evening, my instructional update focuses on finishing our school year strong, particularly regarding student achievement. Student achievement is measured in many ways through various activities, as we saw in our high school presentation earlier this evening, when we had our students tell us that nine students in the Teacher Cadet Program took the Parapro exam and passed it and now have an industry certification. This spring, our primary school students have participated in the phonological awareness literacy screening, better known to us as PALS, to ensure they have the needed reading skills to be successful. Currently, students in grades three through 12 are taking SOL tests to measure their content mastery. Our secondary students have completed their advanced placement exams and most of their career and technical education credentialing exams. And as I mentioned, in addition to industry certification, AP exams can lead to some college credit. They'll finish our CTE exams next week with the WISE Financial Literacy Exam. We're proud of the work of our students and our teaching staff, and I know you will join me in recognizing them for a job well done preparing our students and for working flexibly around all of these testing schedules. I also wanted to share a brief word about summer school this evening. Parents of students in grades K through eight who are being identified for summer school will be contacted by each school. I would like to encourage parents to send their children to summer school if they are selected. We use these summer weeks to provide important instructional support to help students work on key academic skills for improved achievement. As I mentioned earlier this year, there are also high school credit courses offered for the summer. All of the high school credit course information is currently listed on our website under instructional programs. All summer school classes begin Monday, June 27th, and if parents out there have any questions about summer school, I encourage them to contact the student school directly. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation for this evening.
Dr. Colley, thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Colley? Thank you very much. Mr. Melton, could you lead us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. We have A, the approval of minutes of the April regular meeting and work sessions enclosed; B, approval of financial reports enclosed; C, approval of personnel actions enclosed; D, authorization to change appropriation in accordance with attached requests enclosed; E, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed; F, authorization for the superintendent to execute a contract with Service Solutions Corporation to provide custodial janitorial services to Pecosin City Public Schools, reading file enclosed; and lastly, authorization for Pecosin High School to apply for membership with the Virginia High School League for the school year 2016-2017 enclosed.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Lena?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much. Now, other matters for consideration. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I think that Mr. Pappas did a great job of presenting the reason for the changes in meal prices for both the students, that is a requirement, and then in addition for the adult meal prices. So, at this point, I'd just recommend approval of the proposed increase in meal prices for the 2016-2017 school year.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Is that the $100,000 that Aramark is guaranteeing is part of that because of the increase in meal prices?
No, I believe that's mostly as a result of the increase in participation of meals, and also that we're able to provide meals to an outside organization as well, and so that's in there. The meal prices aren't causing enough of an increase for that.
So, what are the consequences of not increasing the meal prices?
Well, we're required by the federal government to keep our student meal prices at a certain price, so that's why we use the calculation that Mr. Pappas described in his presentation. It's all part of that act. The adult meal price, we're making the change to switch them to à la carte, so the adults will have more flexibility in what they're eating, but the student one is mandated.
I just don't recall that amendment to the Constitution where they govern school lunch prices in 50 states. I don't know what happened to states' rights. And I'm sorry, but it just galls me that the federal government can come in and tell us that we have to raise the prices of the lunches for the kids in this community. They do not know the kids in our community, nor the families, and it just, sorry, but it burns me. They are so far out of their swim lane.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Any other comments, questions?
So, what are the consequences of not raising the prices? Do we know?
I would need to bring Mr. Pappas up to the mic, but I suspect we'd run into issues with getting products, USDA food, at the rates that we're able to get them. And also, it's all tied to the funding we receive for students who are on free and reduced lunch.
It's part of the National School Lunch Program. You can opt it out of that.
Yeah. I mean, I understand. I mean, and it's, I mean, our backs are against the wall, really, if we want funding. Yeah. Okay.
Hopefully, in this case, the benefits are greater than any negatives that come with it. And Mr. Pappas is shaking his head.
Nodding or shaking? He's nodding.
Nodding.
Get that camera on him. I should have brought him forward.
Any other questions, comments? Lena?
Mr. Ramers? Did anyone make a motion?
I don't see one.
Yes.
Nice second.
All right. Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
I was going to join you, Dr. Carter, but I'll say aye, it's okay.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Now, consideration of approval for superintendent to execute a contract with Aramark for food service management.
Yes, and again, Mr. Pappas did a great job of describing the RFP and what we will gain through this contract with Aramark. We have had them as our food service provider for quite a bit of time now and have been very successful with them. And I'd like to recognize that our director from Aramark is actually here in the audience with us, and we appreciate the hard work that she does for us. So, with that said, I'd recommend approval for me to execute a contract with Aramark for food service management.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Ramers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Ms. Ramers, do we have any public comment tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. Ms. Sue Zimmerman?
Okay. Yeah, this one right there.
I don't believe we need this, so I just come on.
Ms. Zimmerman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but welcome tonight. We really appreciate you taking the time to come out and address us, and you have three minutes, and if there's anything that we need to respond to you on the superintendent, we'll do that in writing back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's my understanding that last, in the April meeting, that there was a discussion about school bullying, and I don't know what resolution's been made, but as, I do understand this young man has been very helpful in trying to deal with the programs. However, I'm not sure that what we are doing, there may be programs in place, but are they working? Have you talked to the parents of the families who are being bullied? I have a 15-year-old. On February 19th, the school called me because it was imminent danger that he was going to commit suicide, based on, I'm sorry, based on the bullying that was going on to his school and some of the things that were going on. Had it not been a very reactive guidance counselor and an assistant principal who jumped into action, got me, I would have come home to a different story. However, I think that the programs that you may have in place may be in good ideas, good in theory, but in practice, and what's going on in the hallrooms and the bathrooms and the classrooms on the internet, yes, it's not necessarily working. I think it is a national problem. I don't necessarily think it's just Pecosin. Bullying is being identified as something new that wasn't to any of us in our generations. It's a new form of bullying that now everything's bullying. I don't think that's the case in all. My son happens to be high-functioning autistic, and he has no peer buddies. And that's where I kind of couple these two issues into one, is because I've asked on multiple occasions about peer buddy programs for special needs kids or new arrivals to the community. The middle school did a great job. They had a guidance counselor in training. I think she was in her internship, and she set up a program for new kids on the block, which was fabulous. But I believe that Pecosin needs something of a peer buddy program. It's a volunteer program, gives older students the opportunity to help, not necessarily grade school, it's these kids in high school. These are times that's going to make the difference of their life. And these older students have the opportunities to do volunteer time helping with these kids and introducing these kids to their peers, thus making the friendships. It's hard enough being as... It's hard enough being as, I'm called a move-in, to have my children, you know, three years in the making, still not making friends, but now it's leading to the point of because they're the move-ins and they're new kids, or different because, you know, he says things that aren't necessarily the most, you know, most high school-related topics. All of you would find him very interesting. However, his peers do not. So there needs to be something in place besides just a bullying program, but some sort of reaction. Is it working? I understand the students are giving a survey. That's really great, but ask the parents, because they can tell you what's really going on. They're the ones who are sitting at the kitchen table. They're the ones who are hearing the sorrowful moments and hearing the conversations on the phone. It's not the students that, yes, it's great that you're getting their input, but the parents are your first line of defense, and I think there needs to be a program that parents are very aware of, and give us that survey and let us tell you what we think. There's a lot of communication here in Pecosin talking about the programs that are in place currently, as of today, are not working for our students. And I appreciate all of you giving me the opportunity to speak on this, because it's very heartfelt to me, but on February 19th, that changed my life. Your teachers did that for me. And I took my job that was full-time, it was my life, I made that now secondary because my children's education and opportunities in this community mean more than a paycheck. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Zimmerman, I've been on the school board, I believe, four years, and you're the first person who's come forward with public comments, so I really commend you. Thank you so much.
I hope you know it's the same, it needs to happen. You need to be involved in the children's people's lives. Did they make their school today?
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Parrish, can you kick us off with communication?
Yes. I just wanted to highlight what Mr. Bowen mentioned about watching what is going to occur with state revenue in the coming month, and I just want to reassure you that I will certainly keep you updated on that, as well as the community and certainly our employees if we see any changes coming on the horizon. And again, to echo what Dr. Colley said, we have a lot of testing going on, a lot of end-of-the-year activities, and believe it or not, by the time we sit up here again as a group, we will have had graduations. So it's an exciting time of year, but I hope our students stay focused and our parents, like Ms. Zimmerman, stay involved as we move through the end-of-the-year activities. I think that Mr. Bowen will be back with us for the next school board meeting, but only briefly, because he is leaving us. He'll be starting his new job on June 1st, so I just wanted to publicly hear. We're going to be doing this in some other places, but just thank him for the tremendous work that he's done for the school division. He's been with us for eight years, and he has gone through with us the incredible budget crisis that we faced in those eight years, and I can think of no one better to have helped us right the ship during those very rough waters. So a big thank you to Mr. Bowen. He's a huge loss, but we certainly wish him all the best in his new endeavor, and we will stay connected with him. So, thank you.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As usual, we have a very long report, because we're a very active community and very active schools. So as usual, starting with the primary school, this past month was very busy, and on April 20th, PPS hosted the first STEM night, Science, Technology, Engineering Math Night. So over 130 students and their families attended the exciting, interactive evening. Students investigated astronomy, wireless devices, architecture, and connections between math and music. They built gliders and toolboxes, watched 3D printing, and explored robotics and simple coding. This was a great way for students to be introduced into these new fields of STEM, which are on the rise quickly. In addition, at Pecosin Primary School, there were a couple students who were chosen as top winners for the Friends of the Library 2016 Essay Contest. Skylar Duckworth was awarded first place, and Derek Kennedy was awarded third place. Maxwell Kennedy and Alyssa Laney were honorable mention winners. The winning essays are displayed in the library, the Pecosin Public Library, or 50 feet down the hall that way. On May 13th, the Pecosin Primary PTO hosted the Third Annual Spring Carnival. Students and families enjoyed games, prizes, balance houses, face painting, popcorn, snow cones, and cotton candy. And cavities eventually. The evening was a fun event for both young and old students. Everyone went home with a smile on their face, that they slept good after all of that. Moving on to the elementary school, the fourth graders took their annual trip to Richmond. It is always wonderful, as usual, and it fit perfectly lined up with the Virginia Studies SOL test. We received great compliments from the tour guides, and they told us that PES was the best school they'd had in a long, long time. Two longs. We are very proud of our Odyssey of the Mind team that moves on to world competition. PMS and PES teams practiced in front of PES students, which was a lot of fun for all. On April 26th, Pecosin Elementary School had its annual Festival of the Arts Night. Every student had art on display, and third-grade classes performed some of the songs they had learned in music class. Students once again made clay bowls, which were glazed and then fired. Raffle tickets could be purchased for a drawing to see who could win, and all proceeds went to the Peninsula Food Bank. So SOLs are coming up at the elementary school, and all students and teachers have been working very hard, and thank you to all parents and families for all the support you have given to the elementary school and all of the schools throughout the year. Moving on to the middle school, SOL testing started yesterday, so please ask your student to check online for testing dates or have them tell you. The Spring Chorus Concert is this Thursday at 7:00 PM. I recommend you go, they're always pleasant. The yearbook signing dance is this Friday from 6:30 to 9:00. Yearbooks can be purchased at the dance for $40. Eighth-grade drama will put on a performance on June 2nd. Seventh graders will take a field trip to the Norfolk Zoo on June 6th. Seventh-grade drama students will perform an improv night on June 9th. And eighth-grade celebration will be June 10th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. I recommend every eighth grader go to that. That was one of the best times of my life as a middle schooler, so, yeah. So moving on to the high school, we've successfully completed most of the AP and CTE testing except for a few rescheduled tests with testing which is going on this week. SOL testing starts next week. Prom will be at the Mariners Museum again this year, and will be held June 4th. The dance is open all Pecosin juniors and seniors who purchase tickets. The doors will open at 8 o'clock, and the dance lasts till 11:00. Prom tickets go on sale May 19th and will be for sale every day till June 1st. The early bird prices for tickets are $25, so get them, because next week they become $30 apiece, and that can get pretty pricey. So after prom will be held at the high school. After prom is finished, all juniors and seniors can purchase tickets and are encouraged to come for a safe, alcohol-free, and fun night, which, that after prom is being put on by the PHS parents. National Honor Society held its induction on April 25th. Many great juniors and seniors were inducted into that club. The Senior Scholarship and Awards Night will be Wednesday, June 8th at 6:30. You can go online for more details about that, I'm not sure exactly where it is. Graduation will be Saturday, June 18th at Liberty Baptist Church, and congratulations to Zach Clark and Brody McDevitt for their first-place win at the Society of Naval Architects and Marine Engineers Boat Competition. The boat that they designed and the apprentice school students built is in the main lobby at Pecosin High School. I recommend that you go out and come see it. That's all I have to say.
Great reporter. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comment tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Carter?
Yes, I would like to publicly thank Drew, and both for his service on the board this year, and also for his willingness to go and serve the country. So I really appreciate that. Coast Guard Academy is a fine, fine institution, and I'm sure you'll get a good education. Some you might not be too happy with initially, but it'll be good. It'll be good. It'll whip you right into shape, so thank you very much for being willing to, speaking from personal experience, for being willing to do that. And it takes a special person to be able to raise their hand and say that they'll defend the country, so I appreciate that very much. And Mr. Bowen, you will certainly be missed, sir. I've enjoyed, over the years, getting to know you a little better and talking with you, and just thank you for the miracles over the years you've worked with the finances and keeping our reports nice and clean and our audits nice and clean, and just feeding us all the information that we need over the years. So really thank you for that, sir. And congratulations, seniors.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo what Dr. Carter said to Drew. You've been wonderful on the board. Thank you very much for those detailed reports every meeting. They've been appreciated. Mr. Bowen, thank you very much for everything that you've done. You've really been just a lot of information that we've needed to make some smart decisions. So thank you for the, all the financial support has always been wonderful. You've been very wise in your advice to us and in building a budget, and it's been wonderful. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank Ms. Zimmerman for coming out. It is sometimes not an easy thing to come out on a Tuesday evening and address a body like this on live television. I'd like more people to come out. One of the things that had happened after last meeting, when we discussed bullying in our work session, which is something that I had asked, what I had brought up, and Mr. Chairman, you asked to be put on the agenda, thank you very much. I happen to be on Facebook, which is not my favorite place for discourse and communication. I think things should be brought to a more public venue such as this. However, with that said, there were a lot of comments on Facebook about bullying, bullying in schools. So I took it upon myself to post from my personal page to this Pecosin site about my concerns for bullying and the fact that I had brought it in front of the board, that we were mixed on our feelings on how bullying, the bullying programs are doing in our schools. And I asked people to please, while Facebook is wonderful for venting and sharing some information, if you want change to happen, you've got to address your leaders, whether they are appointed, whether they are elected. You have got to come here and address us, or you have got to email us, or you have got to call us. We are in Farm Fresh, we are in Food Lion. Please stop us and say hello, introduce yourselves. I can't guarantee that we're always going to look this nice. We might not be in suits, I might be in a sweatsuit, you know, but please stop me and speak to me about your concerns. One thing that I did say on Facebook, and I mean it, I think everybody on here, although I'm not going to speak for everybody on here, but wants to hear from you. When we don't hear from you, we assume everything is fine. We assume everything is great, and in a lot of cases it is. But if you have a concern, instead of sharing it on Facebook where we might not see it, consider bringing it to us, email us. Our email addresses are on the school board page. Call us, our phone numbers are on there, too. So again, Ms. Zimmerman, thank you. I hope you will be an example to other people, that they will come forward. Just so that you know, I have warned my fellow board members that this topic is not going to end. I am going to keep bringing it up, because it is a concern of mine. So I hope that will give you a little bit of hope that it won't be a dead subject. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to move to the right next year so I can say some things before everybody else says them. They've all been said tonight. Drew, you'll be missed, thank you so much. And Bill, I wrote denied on your farewell reception. I don't think you really go yet. I have to go there or something, so we're going to miss you. Thanks so much for all your hard work this year. You've made it easy for me as a new guy on the board, first year, to kind of get those concepts that were very difficult. So thanks so much for your work, and we'll miss you. Come back. Don't be a stranger on the swim deck or something. Come see us down here, okay? That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Melton?
Oh, I will echo what Drew informed us about this Navy Boat Competition, and I was able to hand out this to our school board members up here. There were many, many teams that actually applied or sent in their designs for a boat to be built. The apprentice school built four, and we raised four. And the winning boat just happens to be from Pecosin this year. And that's not just by chance that Brody McDevitt and Zach Clark did a great job, but they couldn't do it without Ms. Jennifer Romanelli actually becoming an expert on how to build a boat or how to design a boat to begin with, so she can instruct her students. So a shout-out to them. Bill, I'm still thinking of that very hard question to ask you about the budget. And wait for it, folks, there's only one more month left. In the Beth Ann tradition to quote of the month, and only have one month left, a very wise man said that preparing our students and nation for citizenship and a democracy is probably the most important thing public education needs to do. And that kind of is really fitting tonight, seeing we had our teacher cadet program present, and we had Lauren Osborne, our Region 2 Teacher of the Year, be recognized up here. There is a wise old fellow who said, "It is no accident that all democracies have put a high estimate on education, that schooling has been their first care and enduring charge. Only through education can equality of opportunity be anything more than a phrase. Accidental inequalities of birth, wealth, and learning are always tending to restrict the opportunities of some as compared with those of others. Only free and continued education can counteract those forces, which are always at work to restore and however change a form, feudal oligarchy. Democracy has been born anew every generation, and education is its midwife." Now, what is interesting is this quote is 100 years old. It is from John Dewey, who wrote the famous book Democracy and Education, but this happens to be from "the need of an industrial education and an industrial democracy." So the purpose of public education is to prepare all of our students for citizenship. And that concludes our remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. And Drew, thank you very much. I've enjoyed serving with you and enjoyed listening to your reports. You might think they're long, but it's what we really enjoy hearing about, so thank you very much for that. And Dr. Parrish, I don't know if it's okay if I entertain a motion that we do not accept Bill's resignation. Could we do that?
I would like to say yes, but I don't think so.
Bill, thank you very much, and we wish you the best in your new endeavors, and you never know when we might work together again, so we're happy that you've been provided this opportunity and thankful for your service. Thank you. Do we have any material for board review?
We do not.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going into work session. We have three items on the agenda for the work session, including the handbook, code of conduct, summer school board meeting schedule, and student representative to the board. We also are going to have a closed session, and we're actually going to change the order tonight. We're going into closed session first, and we'll come out of closed session and go through the work agenda. We stand adjourned.